Everybody, I will call the January Planning Commission meeting to order. I'm Chairperson Mayor Zach Ruin. Brian, do you want to introduce yourself?
Brian Aaron, Commission Member.
Todd Furkey, City Alderman.
Joel Exton, Secretary.
Tom Ray, Fourth District Alderman.
Kelly Rosecrans, I'm Park Recreation Representative to the Planning Commission.
Shane Burkhardt, Commission Member.
Adam Tagen, Planning and Economic Development Director.
Thank you all for being here and those that might be catching the meeting from home or on demand. Moving to our agenda this evening, the approval of the report from the December eighth Planning Commission is first. Commissioners, what are your wishes regarding that report?
We move to approve.
With a motion to approve by Aaron, second by Furkey, any discussion on the report? Seeing none, moving to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is maps and flats received, item A, Dale and Muriel Carlsen CSM. The applicants are requesting certified survey map approval for the creation of two lots and the dedication of public right-of-way. Subject properties are located on the northeast corner of Kingston Road and Thirty Second Street North. Got the CSM in front of us, Adam, did you want to speak to the request?
Yeah, just real quick, a recent annexation had gone through for the Easter leave portion of these lots. So now that it's all in the city, they're basically reconfiguring the lots to move a garage onto the western lot, out to service that house as well as the garden and then the remaining house will obviously be on its own parcel as well. The only recommended condition of approval is that Thirty Second Street North is actually an eighty-foot right-of-way on the official map, so it would require a ten-foot street dedication on Thirty Second Street North. Otherwise, there were no other comments or concerns raised by staff review.
Any questions? Okay, with that, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Shane and a second by Fran. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Just to clarify, does that include the ten-foot east dedication?
Yes.
Second, we agree to include that in motion, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Great, no other maps or flats received, item three, discussion and review of chapter forty-six sign regulations. This is an interesting, can be an interesting subject, no matter how far we take it, but Adam, would you like to go ahead and begin?
Well, I thought I'd start by reading word for word the sign ordinance. Go around the table, read each other words. Dead side reading. But no, basically, the commission and some of you were on at that time, I believe, not all of you, but basically we went through and completely rewrote the zone, or the sign ordinance, end of twenty twelve, beginning of twenty thirteen. At that time, obviously knew that there was gonna be little issues as you use the code. It's never gonna be perfect as much as I would like to think I am. So basically, we've been using it for about two years. So some of the issues that I've noticed, I tried to quickly summarize in kind of my memo to you guys. Not saying those are the only things, not saying that those changes need to be made, but those are just your suggestions at this point. And there's obviously no timeframe associated with this, so if you guys would like to take more time to review it or to review the code itself if you're not familiar with it or have a discussion on the code itself, if you had any clarification questions that, I mean, there's no need to get it done tonight. Or this is just a discussion. My intent would be once we think we know what we want to do with the code, that we would bring it back for a formal amendment. So that would actually be an actual case that would come before you in the future, so this is just really more of a discussion item. Not sure if you want me to go through each of items that I had in my memo or if they are pretty self-explanatory.
Are there any specific questions on Adam's, call out Adam's, related to that? Tom?
Well, not, nothing in particular as far as, you know, the difference in the wording or the addition of certain words to the ordinance itself. I guess I had just wondered who enforces this?
It would be a combination of myself and the ordinance control officer, Ray Starks.
Okay.
Usually, for the most part, there's active enforcement on making sure that, you know, temporary signs that are popping up within the right-of-way or improper ones like that, those are usually a little more proactive. Then obviously, we keep an eye out for new signs that are being erected without a permit, so. Usually, there's not a lot of complaints about signs unless they happen to be in the vision triangle or something like that.
Or I complain about them.
Yeah.
Sushil is an excellent resource, she likes to note signs that are illegal as well.
For reporting purposes, yeah.
Yeah, why, you know, and I can understand a lot of the political signs, the garage sale signs and stuff like that that people like to put out by the curb and when the garage sale's over, they just shut their doors, they forget to pick up the sign and stuff like that. Some of the, reading through this, and there's a lot to read. But as far as like the flashing signs and stuff like that, I do see signs in the city that are flashing, you know, more of an open sign. Is that different than a advertising sign?
I mean, the open signs, you're talking like one that would be within a window usually, and it'll just. I guess we use a strict interpretation, if it was like a red and blue light or something that would mimic a police safety vehicle, then we would probably make an issue of it and ask them to make sure that it's a static light, you know, because you can obviously adjust most of those so that they're either flashing or they're just on. So that type of thing, we would probably follow up on if you notice those, just let us know. Certainly go and have a talk with them. Some of the electronic message board signs that you see that are flashing, some of those are unfortunately grandfathered, meaning that, I mean, they were erected in place prior. But for the most part, we still try and work with people and ask them to minimize how often the message is changing or something like that so they're not doing, their attention grabbing flash.
And it looked like you had a couple different grandfathering dates, one was in two thousand thirteen, maybe one back in oh nine or something?
The only one I can think of is the two thousand thirteen, which is when this particular code was about.
Okay.
If there's another date in there.
I didn't circle anything either and I read so much stuff. That might be coming out of a different particular reading that I had. But anything that was erected before that, I know in the past too, some of the restaurants that had the, do you call them a sandwich sign with, that are actually on a trailer? Where some of them had to be moved.
Correct.
But they were in place prior to the March thirteen, so you seem to have some type of ordinance before that?
Yeah, we had a sign ordinance before that, yes. And those were, some of them were considered temporary signs. The old code did not do a very good job of differentiating, but considering what was a permanent sign versus a temporary sign. So, you know, some of those arrow signs, for example, they may be temporary in nature, but as long as they were not moving, the old code kind of looked at them as permanent signs. So for example, the auction place is one that comes to mind. Number one, that one started off in Grand Rapids and it's been there since it annexed into the city, so it's kind of a grandfathered one. I think there was a tattoo place that had a similar one. Actually, Ray, our ordinance officer, was just out at Family Auto today making them move that sign. That is not permitted by our ordinance and that's a newer one, so.
Right.
So, yeah, there is.
So this was supposed to cover all, in two thousand thirteen, this was supposed to be the latest and greatest to cover all the old ordinances that you had.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, so as any non-conforming signs get removed or, you know, business goes out of business unfortunately and they take down their sign, then the new people would have to comply with this ordinance, they wouldn't be able to just carry it on. So eventually, the goal is to phase out some of the older ones.
You having a problem with banners? I mean, is banners, I mean, that's on the list here?
Um, it's not a problem so much as the way I remember the discussion at planning commission was that you wanted to allow the banners unless they were getting ratty. And the original language I had had in there was a thirty-day timeframe and a mistake on my part is basically I never struck that thirty-day language. So that's more just of a cleanup of the language. So as long as the commission is okay with allowing banners to be up, you know, for a hundred and twenty days, as long as they're not tattered, torn, flattened around, then that's what this recommended change would be for. For the most part, business owners love the fact that they can put up a banner now on their building or on their freestanding sign without a permit and then they can switch them out when they're having sales. They seem appreciative of that, whereas our old code, they would have had to get a permit and it was only up for thirty days and they would have had to come down for sixty and it was kind of a very cumbersome regulation, so. Of the changes, I think that's one of the few that probably business owners appreciate.
And I would say too, as we kind of move toward some rewrite of our zoning code, that we would include some sign pieces in there. I mean, they would still have to come back reference here, but in terms of, you see a lot of monument signs, a lot of friends and nicer communities where they've done a nice job with monument signs on the ground as opposed to these tall poles that aren't as attractive to look at as some of the other ones. So I think we can see more of that in business districts as the zoning conditions and considerations come before the commission in the future.
Certainly a possibility, yeah.
So, just as a background, because I'm new here to the commission relatively, the major things are aesthetics and, but primarily is just driving safety. So when you're driving along that you're not, you know, bothering the people driving too much, that it would cause an act.
And vision triangles, yeah.
Yeah, so it's all just traffic safety, so it's not like we're just trying to be bullied about signs and stuff.
So that's the emphasis of this. That's correct.
Yeah, safety, the safety is the main one. The other thing is usually if you have a very, very loose sign ordinance that actually kind of backfires because then everybody has a really big sign and then you kind of get lost in the noise, as it were. So it can kind of go.
Too many go-bords essentially of people's.
I mean, I'm, my personal viewpoint on signs is everybody should get a four-by-four sign and that's it. But I'm not the business owner, and so that's why obviously our code, I think it does a fairly good job of balancing. I mean, obviously, everyone will have a different opinion, but we try to make it so that you can have freestanding signs and building signs of adequate size. And it's usually tied to the size of the lot or the building so that it's at least has some sort of sense to it versus just a willing, nearly, you can only have this size sign.
And that was a bit of discussion when we went to develop the last one was, how do we want to account for a corner lot? How do we want to account for some of these that have large frontages? And so we, I think the happy medium we struck was, if you have a large building, let's take the former Zerfor Plaza, the Anytime Fitness where, on Eighth Street. And if you've got that much square footage and you've got that much frontage, the thought is you get more sign space. Within reason, right? You don't want a sign clutter everywhere, but, you know, that's the balance. And then you have to live with the grandfathering piece of what you're gonna leave out there until somebody decides to, ownership change, business changes, you know, you're not gonna have a lot of compliance for a long time.
The permitting of the signs, is that a one-time fee or is it an annual fee?
Permanent signs, it's one-time fee. Currently, it's fifty dollars a sign, basically. So, yeah, once you get that, it's in perpetuity, the language in here actually, so let's say you're McDonald's, because everyone likes McDonald's. But if they went through a rebranding and they were replacing the sign face, but they weren't changing any other aspect of it, or they just have a logo change or something like that, that's, there's no fee for that. But if you were changing from a McDonald's to a record, for example, that new branding would have to go through a purple process. The banners, as I noted, don't require permits, so there's no fee at all for the banners. These special event signs, which are where you'll see the flags or, you know, the waving guy for grand opening, that type of thing, that is a yearly fee of fifteen dollars and it allows up to four events per year. So those are kind of a quick overview of fees.
That was a legal rect, I think, compromise at that point. It was very much about making sure there was allowances for temporary signs, you know, for sales and events and everything. We all get that. I would suggest maybe on, is it the second bullet? Yeah, second bullet on forty-six point five-one times of time limits. You know, the city, as you point out, the hailstorm was one of those that really has created, I would say somewhat of a monster, right? And trying to gain attention for your firm. You know, I think, I'd be in favor of more of a conservative timeframe of when they have to be removed. You know, when you say work is completed, you know, we'll probably have that debate about when that is. So I would point that one out that I think we should set some timeframe on that.
Some of the signs were put on, you know, before the winter, said in and air going to be done until the spring.
Right, yeah, so then therefore they get them all through winter and then.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll have to figure, figure out what makes sense for that one in particular, I just personally feel.
Yeah, like I said, right now, it's really geared more towards your developing a subdivision. Anyone big signs saying subdivision coming soon, being developed by taken builders, you know, here's our subs type of thing. That's how our language is and there's not really anything specific to just those G and G builders or roughing up those type of ones. And, I mean, we can, if it's the will of the commission that you don't even want to allow those in the city, we can regulate those out, those are advertising signs. Most communities will allow them as long as they are up and down and they're only, they're limited not having a level on the same line.
Or banners, surprised to see some of them are eight-foot, four-foot long banners.
Right.
That's too much. So commissioners, what do you think from a standpoint of revisions? Do you want this to come back in February and be able to make some decisions about it? Is that too soon?
I, I would think, you spent a lot of time already working on this thing before you, I haven't got it in the commission, I know that. And that these are the only things that you're concerned with. I guess I don't have any question other than that is.
I'd almost rather, since it's current here as opposed to just kicking the can down the road, just keep going forward with that.
And reading through it too, I mean, yeah, there is quite a lot of different bullet points all through it, but most everyone that I read, I think, all made sense, so I guess I would concur with that too, to accept the revisions and recommend them, it's got a whole group of council here, to do that. But if we do have some issues come up down the road, we readjust, right?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we can adjust it and tweak it multiple times. It's just the goal, it's been, I think we've had that break-in period where we've experienced most questions at this point. So we've kind of been able to identify those issues. So if the commission is okay with it, what I would do is basically draft up formal language. So it would come back, kind of like a redline version of the ordinance as it sits now, showing changes, suggestions, and I can bring that back to you at your next meeting for a more formal approval. If you don't have any other questions on just the summary at this point.
Thanks for me.
I guess I had one question outside of the summary of things, it was just a little background history on the, what signs require permit and having a structural engineer or professional engineer signing off on that? The twenty-foot seems a rather arbitrary number without any context as to what kind of sign it is or anything there. And I guess I would have concern about some bigger signs under that twenty-foot threshold that could potentially, if not designed correctly, fall over or, you know, have some kind. The twenty-foot seems, I don't think it's necessarily the height or something, it can be, is there, was, what was the discussion on that?
Well, I'm trying to think back. Our previous building inspector, who's no longer with us, had raised the concern that, obviously, prior to this revision, we didn't have anything that would ever require engineering plans, so we could conceivably have had a thirty-five-foot tall sign that was a hundred and fifty square feet and if you wanted to put it up on a four-by-four and think that was gonna work?
Yeah.
So be it. So we wanted that, it is, I mean, it's arbitrary, but it's not arbitrary. That was, in his opinion, that was just really where the concern was gonna begin to come at that height. It was gonna be having wind loads of a certain amount of that. You didn't think the average business owner who's just putting up his own sign would be concerned with it unless we made them be concerned with it. So, yeah, if, I mean, looking at either A, if you think twenty feet's too high, I'd be open to reducing it and/or if it's a certain amount of square footage per height, you know, if it's a hundred and fifty square feet, at fifty feet, you probably have more of a concern than if it's a thirty-two square foot sign.
Okay, I was just looking more, then what I'll probably do is just do a few calculations to kind of say, okay, reasonably, what is somebody gonna do, they're gonna write something four to six feet in the ground, what will that take, kind of thing? Just, I mean, I'm not worried that signs are gonna go falling out of the ground, you know, falling over and stuff, but it just seems like an arbitrary number to just say, okay, you go to nineteen foot, you know, eleven inches and you're good to go.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think that's a good idea.
Not being an engineer myself, I, I'm good at arbitrary.
But they're more freestanding signs.
Yes, yeah, this is.
You're referring to not, say, a mill sign or even a sign on our building or your building both. I mean, they're fifteen, sixteen feet up. Where they're attached to the building, it means quite a bit structural, more sound.
Exactly, yeah, if you read the section, it says unless it's attached flat against the building, then, yeah, if it's fifty feet up and it's attached flat to a building, it's more structural.
Yeah, you wonder like the Woodtrust sign that blew over and it wasn't, didn't take that much wind on Eighth Street, it just kind of surprised me, you know, that thing was built.
Yeah, and it wasn't a sign that you would drive by and think it was one to blow over?
No. I think it's in the visual triangle too.
It's not, what's above ground, it's all, it's not below ground.
With that one, I think.
Or a little slab.
Yeah. It's just something that, you know, this is what I do, so I saw that and kind of jumped out at me.
No, that's, that's a really good point.
Absolutely, and if you have any suggestions, just.
Okay.
Language, then just get it to me and all incorporated and we can bring it back as part of that amendment.
It's probably a week before the next, next meeting, which actually is about a week out, right? About two weeks out probably from the agenda being.
The next normal schedule one is February second, I believe. Right now, I don't have anything else on coming before the agenda, so, I mean, if you guys don't want to meet just on signs, we can push it to March two, as long as there's no rush. I'm expecting, the Y was supposed to be coming this month, but they have some other issues they were working on. So what I would expect by March, that they would have their act together, so I would expect we'll have a meeting for sure in March.
If not February, is February too soon, you think, for?
For legal notices, they really need to be getting in, since we can't, I haven't heard anything.
From later meeting in February again, okay. Other agenda items that are coming, do you want to just mention any of them?
Yeah, I guess probably the one the mayor hinted at is something that we've been squirreling money away for, for the last, since, I mean, I think it started when I started, so about four years. We've been putting money aside for an update of our zoning ordinance. Obviously, we pull out the sign ordinance and updated that. That's about as much as I have time or expertise to do on my own, so we've been putting money aside to go out and basically request for proposals to have a consultant take a look and rewrite the entire zoning ordinance. There's any number of ways to do that. You can do a more traditional zoning code like we currently have, which is basically only gonna deal with setbacks, you know, height restrictions presented in scope. There's communities, you know, like the Madison where they regulate everything for the most part. They'll have landscape requirements, they'll have curbing requirements around parking lots and all sorts of different things as well that actually get into the quality of development as well. So that process goes through the planning commission. That's one of the stated duties of a planning commission is to work on and recommend the zoning ordinance regulations. So that will be a big project that we're hoping to maybe get a request for proposals out within the next month or so. So then reviewing of the proposals and figuring out the scope of how far it, the ordinance should go. You know, what type of regulations you'd like to see, what you wouldn't like to see, all those discussions will be had at the commission. So that's gonna be a big project that's coming up.
And the last revision was early eighties?
Yeah.
Or adoption, the last adoption. And I think it lends itself to understand that when you look at construction, new construction around town, it's indicative of the eighties, right, in an eighties zoning code. So I personally am looking forward to making some changes to that, kind of modernizing it a bit.
Right, and also, I mean, the other aspect is just because it has only, the last major update was the eighties, but there's been piecemeal and piecemeal, so it's gotten to a point where I think I have three different size requirements for a shed in the zoning ordinance and it's kind of which one are we going with because they all contradict each other. So there's a lot of those type of issues within our zoning ordinance as well that need to be cleaned out. But that process, you know, from actually hiring a consultant, you're probably looking at a minimum twelve to eighteen month period. So it will not be something where you're having to sit down and deal with it all at once. It'll, you know, it'll be in chunks, month by month, updates and that type of thing, so.
Just a question, Adam, is, is there anything boilerplate about this? Like, for example, Madison, the consultant comes in, is it, just copy what they got, boilerplate, is it?
I would say there's the ability probably to do seventy percent of the ordinance is gonna be fairly standard. I mean, the language will be, but what they'll do is they'll do an inventory of the community. So for example, if a large portion of our community was developed in the fifties and there was a certain setback that was in place or come, and then, you know, let's say all the houses are about fifteen feet off the sidewalk, you know, the fifties. You know, Madison may have a twenty-five-foot setback, so you're gonna have to tweak that and figure out, do we want to make all these homes non-conforming or do you want to have a specialized zoning district that allows those to continue and have someone were to build a house in a vacant lot so that it conforms? So you're still gonna have that customization that's gonna be needed, but yeah, I mean, the bulk of the language, they're not gonna sit down and start page one this, so they'll be tweaking.
And thankfully, we use that kind of concept in our sign ordinance, right?
I would think, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I did not sit down and draft the zoning ordinance from scratch. I took eight different ordinances and kind of piecemealed it together, so.
As far as our ordinance control officer and the reports that are generated by him that we receive, the outcomes, to me, I don't see that many outcomes where a citation was issued or like a case closed type result, you know? And we discuss that up at given resources too. Is there a better way to define what the result of the contact was? And, you know, so many of the actions look like they just continue or will be recontacted. You know, when this position was established, it looked to me like it should almost pay for itself with the amount of violations that we thought were around town. And when I get twelve or fifteen pages of violations, I don't see that happening as far as, you know, the result. Ish, either, you know, what is, what is the result of the contact?
Okay. There's definitely different ways to do that report. It's basically just pulling the information from our tracking software right now. For example, when it says closing, I mean, that means it's basically a case closed type of situation. So obviously, in those situations, if they were given a ten-day timeframe and they complied in eight days, obviously, we're not writing the citation. So in a way, it's a good thing we're not writing as many citations as we have the ability to because that means we're getting compliance. But it's more of a question on the ones that don't comply immediately if we're working with them too much to get compliance or if we should be using that citation as basically that hammer to get that compliance. So I can definitely sit down and try and see if there's ways to make it a little clearer as to what steps have been gone through. I think there's a way to show even timeframes in that report, so you know how many days go between initial contact and case closing so that at least you can see how many days are happening. So, yeah, there's a lot of different ways to tweak that report, try and make it a little more.
You know, with the obvious violations, cars parked on grass and unpaved surfaces and stuff like this, where, where I see stuff in the ten blocks from my work to my home, I'll go past ten vehicles parked on the grass or parked up in the yard or a two-bedroom house that has six vehicles in the driveway. And that's, that goes on for six months until they get kicked out or whatever, you know? So, you know, I guess I'm not seeing the, the return on. So, you know, I guess I'm not seeing the the return on value
Okay.
for that position right now, you know? At least with the information that's fed back to to me.
And are those items that you've reported or are they ones that you just noticed and?
They're, they're the ones that I read about in the report.
Okay.
Okay, and read about them again the next month, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, some of those will be repeat offenders because it is a tenant or something like that, they're parking on the grass and you can't really just start with a citation, so, yeah, they comply, but, yeah, we could, and really, that's probably something that would be a good thing if you have a half hour or we can, I can sit down with Ray and you and kind of go over and see if probably can make that work better for you. Uh, we definitely want you to see the value in that position because there, if you're not seeing it, then we need to do something because I think most people are seeing it. And it may just not be in your area where we're missing items that are very apparent to you that we're just not taking care of. At least in my opinion, seeing what it went from the part-time to the full-time, it's, we're getting, we're making a lot more progress now than we ever were.
And I understand the the amount of contacts being paid, I see that, with the pages and pages.
Take her in.
But what's being done?
Right.
You know, that's what.
You wanna see that there's actual resolution, not just contact.
Right.
And and we also, I don't wanna do during the planning commission, but one comment was, before we created the position, was to revisit the timeline and to which people have time to remedy the situation, because that's also a factor in there if you make initial contact and you give them, the ordinance prescribes a certain window for them to fix it, it's a lot longer than what we think it could be or should be. We should be revisiting that as well.
Right.
The ordinance side, so. Anybody have any other um future agenda items or anything for us, otherwise entertain a motion to adjourn?
Always.
Have a motion, second and a second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here and for the discussion.
Question.
Yes.